All right, greetings everyone. It's nice to be here. It's nice to see all of you. So many virtual meetings nowadays. It's actually nice to see people face to face.
Sort of face to face.
Sort of face to face. Yes, some of us are virtual, yes. Myself, Director of Operations and Mr. Shelby, our Plants Manager, will be discussing. I want to emphasize extra cleaning and disinfecting that we've been doing in our buildings. So before I move on, we have a short video that we put together that I'd like to share with you.
Hello, everyone. I'm David Muston, Director of Communications for the Dearborn Public Schools. Joining me, our Supervisor for Safety and Security, Mr. John Leacher. John, thanks for joining me.
My pleasure, Dave. Thanks for having me.
Absolutely. You know, there have been many, many people, dozens of people, who have been working very hard to prepare our school district for when students begin to return. John and I have got the lucky assignment of going around the district and kind of sharing with all of you some of those things that are going to be taking place. Transportation, cleaning, all of those types of areas that are going to get us ready so when students return, how we're going to operate and how we're going to look. And we're going around the district, sharing some of that with you. Today, we're going to talk about cleaning, John. We're here at Oakman Elementary. The school is beautiful. It's beautiful even pre-COVID, whatever. They just do a great job here of making this school look great. This school is approaching 100 years old. How is that cleaning going to change or how's it going to look when we start bringing students back, even if we're only bringing them back in a hybrid model?
So, the biggest change, Dave, with regard to how we're going to deal with COVID, is going to be with the frequency of cleaning. And that, if students coming back for a full day, we're going to be cleaning once every four hours. And that is required that we hit all touchpoints with that sanitizing and that cleaning. Now, touchpoints. A touchpoint is a light switch, a band-ister on a stairwell, things that are touched frequently throughout the course of the day by multiple students. So, we're going to make sure that we sanitize those. In addition to that, we're going to make sure that part of that four-hour cleaning includes getting to each one of our restrooms and making sure that those are cleaned as well as stocked with paper products, i.e. paper towels. So, as we know, the most important thing to do to keep ourselves safe is to wash our hands. And we wash our hands with soap and water for at least 20 seconds. Now, we want to make sure that we've got hand towels there so our students are wiping those hands with those hand towels and keeping their hands clean and that we encourage them to use those facilities. So, that's really the biggest part of what's different compared to what we normally do.
And then when students leave, it'll be a thorough cleaning as we normally do?
Yeah, absolutely. I think it needs to be noted here that our custodial staff throughout the entire district does an absolutely phenomenal job of keeping our buildings clean. And as they always do after we're through with each day, they will go through and do the thorough cleaning that they always do.
That's great. Now, I know myself, speaking of cleaning, I go over to Kroger. I can't find Clorox wipes for the life of me. I don't know where they are. They disappeared. What about us? How are we? How's the district? Are we stocked? Do we have the supplies we need to keep things clean, to keep the bathrooms stocked?
We absolutely do, David. And I think that the district, again, has done an absolutely phenomenal job of getting out in front of this and making sure that we not only ordered supplies early, but we have continued to order supplies throughout the course of the last several months and make sure that we have an abundance of stock in our warehouse to make sure that every single one of our staff, and our students especially, have what they need, when they need it, to maintain safety and keep themselves safe.
And so, that's a good stock of cleaning supplies? Also, a good stock of PPEs, masks and gloves for our cleaning staff, shields if needed? Those kinds of things?
Absolutely, absolutely. You touched on the cleaning supplies. I think it's also important to touch on the fact that when we're not able to get to restrooms or in between places, in between restrooms, if we need to clean our hands or keep our hands sanitized, we have sanitizing stations, hand sanitizer stations positioned throughout each building to make sure, again, student, staff alike, and make sure if they just feel that need, hey, you know what, if I don't have soap and water, which again is a primary way to do it, we get a hold of that sand sanitizer, make sure that our hands are clean. So, we're doing everything we can possibly do to make sure that everybody that's in our buildings is as safe as possible.
So, one other thing that I know our Superintendent, Dr. Malaco, has talked about often is some new devices that have been purchased to help our cleaning staff sanitize quicker, easier, more efficiently. A little bit more information, you know about those?
Yeah, I was kind of holding out on you when you asked what we were doing. But yeah, I'm glad you asked me about that because one of the things we're really excited about is some new equipment. And I think it's probably better if you see it rather than me try to explain it to you. And I believe that our Engineer, Ali, is in a classroom getting ready to clean a classroom right now. So, if you follow me, I'll show you what that looks like.
Okay, let's go.
All right. So, Dave, we're really excited about some new equipment that we've been even procuring to help in our sanitizing efforts in our classrooms. And as a matter of fact, Ali, our awesome Building Engineer here at Oakman, is going to show us what some of that equipment is all about. Ali?
This is our new electrostatic sprayers. It's pretty much, it's like Ghostbusters because it's a backpack. And we use it to spray all of our desks in all the classrooms. It's very easy to use. It's safe and it's efficient. It's very quick. Get through a classroom really quick by just going one little spray and pretty much done.
That's awesome. Ali, can you give us a little demonstration?
Sure. So, just, you just point and spray. It actually just, you want a light film on this? And just keep going.
And then when you're done with this, it just sits for a period of time and then it evaporates and then the desks and everything is sanitized, correct?
Yes.
And then if I touch this before it were to dry, there's absolutely nothing toxic here, nothing that can harm me or harm my skin, correct?
Nothing at all. It's very safe.
Fantastic. That's awesome, Ali. Thank you so much. Thanks for the demonstration.
Thank you.
So, obviously, cleaning is going to play a huge role in any safe start back-to-school plan. Our Operations Department, Engineers and Custodians are ready to meet that challenge. We know that COVID-19 is spread easily through airborne particles and that's why wearing a mask is so important. But we also know it can be spread by landing on hard surfaces. We touch those surfaces and then touch our face, our nose, our eyes, our mouth, our ears. And with students, especially younger students, that's a lot more common to happen. So, cleaning those high-touch-point surfaces such as doorknobs, light switches, and desktops and handrails is going to be key in helping to mitigate the spread of COVID-19. I know our custodial staff is up for the challenge and ready to make sure that our schools stay clean and sanitized throughout this entire process so that we can have a safe start back to school. Thank you for taking a few moments to join us and learn about our plans as we prepare slowly and cautiously to return to school. In fact, John is so excited about the next one that we're doing, he's already in the car. I better go catch up with him.
Okay, so, I'm done with that video pretty much now.
Sure, sure. During that video, I'm sure a lot of people out there watching it are probably thinking the same thing I'm thinking. That, okay, the chemical's not toxic, so if you touch it, it's okay. How come there's no eye protection when they're spraying?
That's because that, Mr. Shelby, he'll get into the details about what products we're using a little bit more. But that's a good question. I'm glad that you asked because...
We'll wait till...
Yeah. He'll explain a little bit more. But I do have some talking points I'd like to go over. And again, before I start, just want to emphasize, all this is what we're talking about is extra. Extra cleaning, extra disinfecting that we're doing during this COVID pandemic. As stated in the video, the minimum is four hours. But what we're going to explain to you is we're going above and beyond that. So, the first thing that we're doing is adjusting our custodial schedules. So, in conjunction with that, with using some of our other classifications, we're bringing staff in earlier in the day. And the reason why we're doing it is instead of doing it at just a four-hour mark, we're having staff continually go throughout the building and disinfect areas. So, that way, it's more comfortable for our teachers and our students are coming in. And we just feel that it's a better way to make sure that our buildings are safe for not just our staff, but our students. So, we're going above and beyond there and doing it continually throughout the day. Another thing that we're doing is we're coordinating classroom schedules. Two of our Principals, I believe, are going to be coming up here a little bit later. They've been phenomenal. That's two of our bigger buildings with helping us with this. And that is what we're doing is we're working with our Principals, our Engineers, and we're scheduling the classes as we use to be able to give us the proper amount of time to get in-between classes to do the disinfecting and cleaning. And more importantly, at the end of the day, at the end of every day, we're still cleaning and disinfecting our entire buildings. So, that's been a huge part of our success of what we've been doing lately. Another thing that we've been doing is utilizing checklists with timestamps. That way, the Engineers have a tool that they can receive back from their staff to say, okay, this section has been done. This is when it was done. And then limiting classroom materials. This is another big portion of what we've been doing. So, instead of having a lot of shared items in the classrooms, we've, the teachers and the Principals have been putting packets together for the students to use and they can store those away. They can bring them out when the students need them. So, it limits the disinfecting that has to be done on the shared items in the classroom. And also the personal items. Instead of having desks that are cluttered, like my desk probably was at one time, it's clear. So, it makes it much more efficient and easier to get those desks and tabletops disinfected. And then transportation. I want to talk a little bit about transportation before I hand it over to Mr. Shelby. We do have a video about that, but I can talk about real briefly. Every single bus, we've installed hand sanitizer right at the door. So, when a student walks onto the bus, the drivers are encouraging them to use that to clean their hands. And then we're also enforcing that masks have to be worn at all times. Our drivers have extra masks onboard to pass out to those students if they show up to the bus without one. And then we've also been working with the administration. I don't want this to come across the wrong way. This hasn't been a problem. But we are working with the administration to help enforce that strict guideline of wearing a mask at all times. That's all bus staff and all students. So, those backpack sprayers that you saw, those are electrostatic backpack sprayers. I think that's why we wanted to show the video because that was really the best way for you to see how it works. But what that does is electronically charges the disinfectant so it will stick to any surface that it touches, whether it be under the table, on top of the table, aside of items. So, before I hand it over for any questions, I'm going to pass it on to Mr. Shelby and let him discuss about the products that we're using.
Hey, thank you, Mark. Good evening, Dr. Malaco, President Barry, Board Trustees. I'd like to take a few minutes and share with you the products we're using to disinfect our buildings during this pandemic. First, I'd like to make mention of the difference between sanitizing and disinfecting as we've been hearing these words quite a bit lately. Sanitizing and disinfecting can be considered the same thing to some people, but actually, they're a little different. Sanitizing is meant to reduce the growth of bacteria and viruses. Disinfecting kills germs on surfaces and objects. It's used to help stop the spread of diseases and viruses. That being said, what we're doing in the district is we are disinfecting our buildings. Sanitizing is kind of a gentle word. It can be a gentle word for, just a gentle way to disinfect, they say. So, we are doing disinfecting. A lot of the products we're using come from Spartan Chemical, one of our regular chemical vendors that we've been using for a long time. All the products we use carry a COVID kill claim and all the SDS sheets are provided for all the products we use as well. The first product that we use is called... Clean on the Go HD QC2. It's used in a spray bottle with a clean rag. We've got a labeled bottle with a clean rag. And you saw it in the video, what they were doing, spraying and wiping down touchpoints. It's used for desk cleaning, faucet handles, light switches, computer keyboards, handrails, all the above, all the touchpoints. And this device that you see on top of this is a portable dispensing system. And these come with these units and they screw right onto the top. You hook your hose up here. And when you're filling these bottles through this hose, you just hit this button right here and there's a metering tip in here that supplies the product at two ounces per gallon, which is the manufacturer's specifications and leaves little room for error when we're mixing these chemicals. Okay? Just so you see this stuff, you'll see this stuff around our buildings. Maybe not this. This should be in a closet, but you'll see this stuff. You'll see our Custodians and Engineers using these products. The second product we use is very similar to that, the same type of bottle, although it's green in color and that's actually a green, a green product and is sent free as we use in some of our buildings throughout the district. But it does, it serves the same purpose. Both of these products, when used in the proper dilution ratios, are not classified as hazardous and contain no hazard statements according to the GHS. The GHS is a globally harmonized system of classifying and labeling all chemicals. We have also received a large delivery of a disinfectant called Kleese. It's this one here. You'll be seeing this. And this is a disinfectant that contains 75% alcohol, which the CDC approves for killing of this virus. We also use several different types of disinfecting wipes. We've got Spartan Hard Surface Disinfecting Wipes. We've got Arrow Disinfecting Wipes. We've got 75% alcohol wipes. And we use those throughout the district for, let's say, touchpoint cleaning. And we use those in the offices for a quick cleanup and/or we use them for keyboards and computer mice in the Chromebooks so we don't get them too wet with the spray. And finally, you did see the video on the electrostatic sprayers. You say you may have seen these in hospitals, airplanes, in commercials and in schools. And that video, that was a great video, by the way. That was the first time I saw that. The idea behind these is, as Mark mentioned, they put a positive electronic charge on the disinfectant that we use. And generally, whenever you spray it on any, any surface, any items that have a negative charge, it acts like a battery, or I'm sorry, it acts like a magnet. And the negative charge attracts a positive charge and it gives a uniform coating all over. Even if you're spraying it right over the top, it's going to go where it can attach itself. And it has a very uniform coating and works very well. The disinfectant product we are using in these sprayers is a very mild chlorine solution. We use regular tap water or distilled water along with an electrolyte packet, which is basically just a saltwater brine. And we generate this in what looks like a coffee pot. And this solution then gets poured into the sprayer and ready to use. It's a very safe solution and no special PPE is required. These are excellent for disinfecting classroom furniture, walls and bathrooms. It can be done quickly with uniform coverage and it can be done in a large volume. Lastly, I'd like to just say, early on in this pandemic, supplies, disinfecting supplies, PPE supplies, were pretty difficult to get our hands on. We got what we could, but at this time, we have a pretty good stock of all the products and we have orders in for more. And I'd also like to say, our engineering staff and custodial crew have done a great job all through this pandemic. And we'll continue to do the best job that we can to keep our buildings safe for students, staff, community members and anybody who comes through our doors. That's about all I have. I'd be happy to answer any questions. You have any?
Trustee, what's your question?
Okay, I've got a couple of questions and probably I'll direct it towards Mark first. And it's because there has been some comments about busing. Now, I know when and if we start to bring students back, it will probably be at the elementary level, which we don't have a lot of busing at that level compared to the middle schools and high schools for... But I do know that I've got a bus that goes down, we must have, I must have students down my street that are being picked up for learning labs currently for the special needs population, I'm assuming. So, I do see the buses out and about. There's been questions about cleaning of them. Are they being cleaned every time the students, after they're picked up or dropped off, before the next time they go out?
Yes, that's a great question. It was on my list to mention. I'm glad that you brought it up because I failed to or forgot to. But we call it in our office a run. So, a run is basically each time that the bus delivers students to a school. So, after they finish that run, the whole entire bus is disinfected by the bus staff.
Okay. And are we going to attempt to practice, besides masking, any kind of social distancing on the buses or when, once we're, even if we go into a hybrid period where we've got... And I know the scheduling has been logistically difficult.
Right.
But is that anticipated that we'll be able to do that?
We've talked about trying to do it somewhat at, what I've been here in the past meetings, at some of our buildings that have, you know, full buses at our middle school and high school level. We've talked about doing some of that. We've been talking with National Trails, our new contracted transportation company who's been doing a phenomenal job. We're getting a great feedback from them who's been providing transportation for our special ed families. So, we're trying to get them on board to maybe help us out so we could do something like that. We're looking at maybe going, I know that this is difficult for, and maybe make some of the community feel unsafe to put their students on the bus, but really, feasibly, it'd be hard to do less than two students to a seat for the way that we're set up if we really want to look at transporting students. Because if you were to do less than two students to a seat, we just don't have the bus staff or even the fleet and even a contractor wouldn't be able to ramp up and help us out in that nature.
Okay. So, then my next follow-up question to that is... If we're going to be doing potentially A-Day, A and B Days kind of thing and we're going to go alphabetically, how is bus scheduling going to be affected? Because not every kid is going to be situated in a busing scenario with all the A through K's in one bus route thing and all the others at the other side on days, you know?
It would be like a typical beginning. At the beginning of every school year, we have to balance our buses. So, in the beginning of whatever plan we decide to go with, I'm sure that we're going to have to look at the ridership and balance it out and try to get that down. Meaning, we might have some buses that have more than two students to a seat in the beginning. And then we would balance it out and we'd adjust stops and ridership on what buses. But you bring up a great question. We're going to have to take into consideration, I've been a part of a lot of many great discussions and committees at all school levels in order to be able to, we have a three-tier system in order to transport all our students more efficiently. Meaning, one bus can transport students, how we were set up before is to a high school, then to a middle school, and then that same bus could transport students to an elementary school. Now, with all of the disinfecting that we have to do in between each run, we're going to have to tier, you know, adjust our times between those schools so we can give the bus drivers enough time to disinfect the buses. And we've been working on that in the committees.
And if these students are, I'm assuming that the bus routes were by location, not by names. So, if we start to do, you know, cohort students alphabetically, they could be all over the place.
Yeah. One thing that's going to help us with that question is that all the plans we're looking at only bringing in, and I don't want to say that we've made a decision yet, but a lot of the plans are looking only at bringing in half the students at a time. So, that's going to really help with our ridership.
Yeah. That I anticipate. I'm just wondering, the routes are going to be a little tougher.
So, just to add something that our team talked about, not just with the busing, but also, that's why we haven't said which alphabetical because we want to look at the numbers as to how many that would be in the schools. So, you know, obviously, we're doing the alphabetical because of families.
Families, right.
But transportation, we know will be, and I appreciate the great work, Mark and Gary and everyone, but we know that transportation is going to be one of the biggest challenges. And we're being honest with the state regulations of the mask, but they recognize, you know, just like on an airplane, you're not going to be the six-foot distancing. So, if you are traveling, but we're going to try to limit as many as we can and we're definitely not going to have maximum capacity on buses. And we also anticipate that, you know, some parents may just choose that they don't want to... So, that's going to be another factor when we look at the data. You know, some parents may choose that, you know, they may not want their children riding a bus even though they may be eligible. So, that's another factor that may come into play. But I know we're going to work hard, but we're being honest. And Mark's done a great job with Gary, as you can see. And I got to commend the Engineers and everyone because they're a big part of what we're doing and they've been professional since the pandemic started in getting the supplies and Gary and ordering it. And, you know, the board, thank you to the board. At the college meeting a couple of months ago, you approved additional PPE so we can stock up. But I will, you know, we have to put it out there and be honest. Transportation is going to be a challenge and, you know, kids will be wearing masks, students will be wearing masks, but the reality is, you know, it'll be impossible to have a six-foot social distance. And that's just the, and, you know, that's the regulations from the state. So, that will be part of the equation. Again, thank you, Mark.
Yeah, absolutely.
Trustee Elaine, do you have a question?
Yeah, I did have a couple of questions. I'm not sure if this is the time, but I was wondering if we can put up some of the training videos like Mr. Shelby's instructions. It's one thing to be told something and it's really helpful to be able to go back and double-check yourself. So, I don't know, I'm assuming that everyone has been trained in safety of handling any of these chemicals and how to mix them, how to use the electrostatic machines. But I just want to suggest that we have some kind of videos and those are put up for employees to go back to as a reference. That's one thing. I stepped away for a moment to grab some more of the public comments. So, I don't know if there was discussion on ventilation, what we're doing with ventilation with posters at the schools, whether we have a COVID coordinator.
We didn't get the...
So, those are just some of the questions I had.
So, the first question, yes. The chemical suppliers have videos out there that Mr. Shelby has shared with Engineers to then share with our custodial staff. But before that, during the summer, I got to give, I mean, Mr. Shelby's been really passionate about that topic, about getting them all trained, all of our Engineers and all of our custodial staff. He did several trainings over the summer. Of course, in a district this size, you're always going to have a few that maybe weren't able to make that training. So, he followed up with those videos and had the Engineers pass along that training to a few custodial staff that couldn't make it, to the district-wide training. And we also incorporated to where they had to sign off that they received the training.
Trustee Thorpe?
This echoes what Dr. Malaco said and it's a question I asked at our last board meeting. Have we sent a survey or do we plan to send a survey to those who normally would be riding a bus to see if they would be interested in riding a bus in the current situation?
Yes, we have discussed doing that. I put the data together. We have the data. It's just a matter if the committee decides to go forward with that. It's ready to go.
Thanks.
To answer Trustee Elaine's question about the ventilation, great question. We are preparing right now. We have two licensed HVAC technicians. They're great guys that know a lot. And the one, his passion is about that very topic. So, if you have any questions, please forward them to us because at the next board meeting, we're putting a presentation together where he's going to come in and discuss that topic. But currently, real quick, what we're doing is every building does have a fresh air intake where it allows fresh air to come in outside. We're opening those up to where it's letting more in. And we also, instead of running our fans, you know, just during the day, we're continuing to run those 24/7 to get that air circulating all through the night so we start off, you know, with more fresh air in the beginning of the school day. But we will have more on that topic on the next board meeting.
Agreed. Thank you.
Then to follow up, I assume the rooms that we're using for quarantine rooms, that those are rooms that have windows and ventilation in them? And then also, how are we deciding who will staff the rooms, Dr. Malaco? Will it be volunteers first or maybe people who have already been exposed to COVID? I don't know.
The staffing would be done at a building level. But as far as the room ventilation, we are working on right now to purchase, we work through the county. They supplied us with a vendor that can, we can purchase air purifiers, room-specific. So, we may have, I don't want to say for sure. I may have an onboard agenda at the next board we need to make a purchase like that.
Yeah, that's what I asked about.
Yeah, yes.
Dr. Tocqueville's going to come up and help with the question on... I know with the quarantine room, which is, or the COVID coordinator, thank you, Mark, it's required by the plan and it's in our plan, so every building has to have that. With, you know, the N95 mask and other PPE that's required.
And they're only supposed to be in for 15 minutes or something. They're supposed to rotate was what I read.
Yeah, there will be a little bit more on the quarantine room. There's a, that's part of the K-12 reopening plan. Each school administrator is developing the quarantine room, where is it? The ventilation, the six-foot, you know, distances apart, the PPE for... the six-foot, you know, distances apart, the PPE for the staff person who potentially would be staffing that, relief of that staff person if a child cannot be picked up right away, as well as supports for students so that they're as comfortable as possible in the rooms.
Any other questions?
I still have, I have one or two more yet.
Well, go ahead, Trustee Elaine.
Okay, so how are we, how are we as staff, everyone as staff, how are they reporting unsafe practices to each other, to building principal, I assume? Are the, maybe as human beings, we need to develop gestures to each other, like, hey, you forgot your mask, or, you know, people get it dropping down? And then also, what are we doing if we have parents that come in that don't have masks on, parents, staff, or students?
I can comment on that, I mean, we've, our administration, and like we said earlier, you know, we control what's in the schools. I feel very comfortable about what our staff is doing. I think the non-instructional did a great job, and it took a little while for them to get used to things back in the spring. I think our instructional staff are also getting used to the process, and, you know, basically, there's just no options. Our staff must follow it, we've said it here, the unions understand, it's regulations, and if someone does see it, they should report it to a supervisor, we are then, or to the union, and that's fine, too, and we will, you know, if they feel more comfortable, that's fine, but we do have a process. We understand that some staff may not be comfortable going to another staff member, they're, you know, obviously, that's their comfortability, but I've set the tone in our general administrators meeting, saying there will be no tolerance for not wearing masks and following the protocols. If I'm in a building and I see it, I'll report it to the principal, the principal is required to address it immediately in a very, you know, tactful, discreet manner, as we do any other situation that we've had, but we will not have any tolerance for that, so people need to report it ultimately. Again, that's up to their comfort level. If some people are, you know, have that relationship, you know, I was a teacher and a fellow colleague, and they have that, hey, what, you know, you're in that, you see that classroom, put that mask on, or whoever it may be, that's fine, but if not, they have the right to report it to the supervisor, you know, any administrator, and we will address it in a very, you know, calm manner, and not, we're not going to do it confrontationally, but we just, we have to put that out there, that it's required. I mean, the rates are going up, we are not going to be successful in schools if we're not following the rules, so that's the one thing I do feel really good about, is in the schools, we can control that, you know, when we're at the, I'll just say it, when I'm at the football game, and, you know, on the other side of the fence and things, and people, I don't, unfortunately, I can't police that, that's where, you know, people in the community have to step up and do things, but in the schools, and within it, we can do that, so anybody can report it, we want, and we've had Jane Maza report to us, too, and we've addressed it. So I will report that I believe the majority, I'm not going to say we're 100% perfect, but that's what we want to be, and if something happens, you know, we also have to be understanding, too, like, I'll be honest, I, there's, you know, we're used to it now, right, where I'm putting on when I'm done, one time that I accidentally walk out of my office and I realized I didn't have it, and I went right back in and grabbed it, because it's the new norm, but it wasn't intentional, but generally, we're now getting used to it, just like we have to follow the check sheet, either you have to, staff has to fill it out, or, you know, you fill it out when you enter the building, or you do it electronic. I'm doing electronic, so I do my entry, my exit is electronic, and so all that is documented, so staff should feel comfortable to report it, because this is something that we all need to do to work together if we want in-person instruction, because not only that, but we're protecting the health and safety, you know, of the community, so I think that's very important, and if there was a second one, I think, no, I talked for a while, but I can't remember if there was a second part.
She didn't ask a second question.
That was, okay.
She had two, she had, you had the last, one more question, Trustee Elaine? Well, I thought you said you had two questions, she only asked one, yeah.
All right.
Okay, I guess we're good? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Wipe your, wipe your counter.
See, we follow, you see, too, look at, we've got, we all have our board members, we all have our sanitizer here, and masks, and we're all doing our part.
I think you're a little obsessive compulsive with yours.
But I, but I was like that before, Mary, you know that, so.